...council meeting Monday, June 25th. Order of the invocation given by Gary Stewart and the place of allegiance given by Mr. Keith Smith.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you to this day. We thank you for the many blessings you have given us. We ask now that you watch over these proceedings and that we please on your side. Please watch over the citizens of the United States, our military, and bring them home safer to their families. God our guide and direct us so in the end we may welcome to thee, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Phillips, will you hear the roll call, please?
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Here. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make the motion.
The second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote on it. Fairly say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say no. Go to approval of previous minutes from June 11, 2018. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second. On the fair, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say no. There is no o business, so we'll go to new business. First item is to consider resolution to award the container bid for solid waste department. It's recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to Schaefer Systems as the lowest responsible bidder that met specifications. And they were $60.55 a unit. So that being said, do I have a motion to approve Schaefer Systems?
Make the motion.
About a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote on it. Fairly say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say no. Next item is to award, to consider resolution to award the runoff bid for solid waste department. It's recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to Gregory Container out of Fayetteville, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder that met specifications. Do I have a motion to approve Gregory Container for that?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote on it. Fairly say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say no. Go to item number three. Consider resolution to adjust the record rates. It's written that Scottsboro Land here by Tops Tower, Loom State Trivers, and still post O E Vs. It's discussed in the work session. Do I have a motion to approve, adjust the record fees, rates?
Make the motion.
About a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote on it. Fairly say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say no. Go to item number four. Consider a budget amendment for $1,697 for the HVAC unit at the library. Do I have a motion to approve $1,697?
I'll make it.
About a second.
Second.
Any discussion? It seems as though I did want to discuss something about the library. Laurie had called me a couple of weeks ago when this went out. And I know when we do our budget going forward, we need to look at adjusting her budget amount for maintenance because it seems as though here recently, every time something goes out, she's having to come. We need to do a budget amendment or something for her. And it's needed, as much work as she does, and she does an outstanding job, and I appreciate what she does, but we need to make sure we take care of the library. Does all have you, might have anything? If not, we'll vote on it. Fairly say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say no. Go to item number five. Consider the approval of change order and budget amendment for the downtown square street Looks like, Mr. Phillips. So the project, the city's responsibility is up to $26,345.67. The total project cost submitted for the grant application was $347,586. The bid total was $334,156. So we're having to look at doing a budget amendment for $26,347.67. Do I have a motion to approve a change order and a budget amendment for downtown square street skate phase two project for $26,345.67?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second? I have a second, so this motion fails. We'll go to item number six. Discuss the landfill permit renewal. Time to ask CDG engineer in Big Ear, Daniel. Go up to him, please.
Yes, thank you for the chance to address the council. Tonight, I'd like for you guys to hear a little bit about the history of CDG, the city, and the solid waste authority, and maybe answer any questions you might have related to our RFP. CDG's been working with the city and the solid waste authority since 2006 as its primary landfill consultant. Part of our team includes Highland Technical Services also, a long-standing consultant for the city and the solid waste authority since the early 90s. Our first task, beginning in 2006, was to develop an alternative to a closure of cell one that the city was looking at, a multimillion dollar project, that we developed an alternative to delay that closure even through today. It has not been done. I think that initialized with a summary of $3 million. Since that time, we've worked a number of projects with the city and solid waste authority, including landfill gas entry project through TBA that was operational until last year. We permitted a C and D landfill expansion in 2007 that provided the city an additional 15 to 20 years of disposal capacity. We've gone through two permit renewal cycles with the city at the facility in 2008 and 2013. And we have been, as it relates to your permit renewal this time, we've had some discussions dating about what was required and what would be needed some metals for the city. So we were a little bit here to answer questions, to see if there could be consideration for CDG to move forward with the project. It is due in about July 15th, I think is the six month renewal timeframe. So there is some work to be done to meet that, but we had, we've begun, we've done some of that work prior to April through part of our discussions with Eddie and solid waste group on standing yearly activities that would be coming up. So kind of leading into the budget year, we talked about upcoming compliance activities. And part of our role with the city has been to maintain compliance on all facility permits. So that's a little bit about our history with the city and solid waste authority and landfills here. And from there, I'd be welcome to opening, answering any questions you might have about our services, and then we might maybe answer any questions that are outstanding related to our proposal.
It's my understanding, prior to you guys coming along, we had what would be considered the worst landfill in the state of Alabama. And that's pretty bad, wouldn't be the worst, second, wouldn't be the worst, just like saying, you're in Mississippi. But you did come over in about 19 years, though. We went from the worst in the state of Alabama to one of the best in the state of Alabama. And we've maintained that ever since. To me, that seems like quite a feat. It's my understanding, the engineers probably of you guys charge us $6,000 a month just to be our engineer. I don't fault it, just to be our engineers. Anytime we had them to do anything, they were charged up to, and they took them to phone calls. And it costs us anywhere from $80,000 to $100,000 a year. You guys, you answer phone calls, you don't charge us nothing for phone calls. You do all kinds of projects for us. You don't charge us anything. When we ask you to do a project, that's when you charge us.
That's right.
If I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir. Beginning in 2006, we entered a professional services agreement with the authority with the format of that, that we would provide consulting on your phone calls and things like that at no cost. From there, once we define a project or a specific task, then through that master services agreement, we execute individual authorization. So we developed a scope of work submitted to the director of the solid waste authority. Upon approval, we kind of set our budget there. So individual projects.
There you go.
Spotlight. Thank you.
Ready to resume? Yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
So I think, councilman, to address your question, when we have a defined scope of work, then we operate within the budget. There are some other activities we've helped the city develop and obtain A D M grants for, like the road runs, walking trail that's out of the city park there. Some of that work we did at McCosta, the city park.
I also thought to wish, just that I knew you all were going to be here, that it's my understanding to the first gap that you did for the city's cost, where you charged $15,000 or under estimate for the same project was a million. So that's pretty good to have on the order.
Yes, sir. That was the project we were talking about. Rather than put the synthetic cap on, which is a very expensive project, we designed a stormwater alternative to put what's called an intermediate cover on it. So some clay and terraces to direct the water, grass it down. That closure will happen at some point, but it will be many years down the road.
I also asked how much money we put in the landfill each year. And we budgeted $25,000. And rumor, if you have any, comes out of there, but we never use it. Four, five thousand dollars is about most we ever use, from my understanding. I believe Mr. Williams would want to tell me this, and the rest of it we designated to some other project in the landfill or in that department. So not many departments can operate on $25,000 and not use it well. I do, if somebody else has a question, I guess.
If I can take a minute, you've mentioned the state of the landfill when we began. And I think that's maybe a compliment for us, but also a testimony to the people that run it. They moved from a very poorly-run landfill to nomination and acceptance of public N S W landfill of the year, which is now the solid waste award that they receive. So some of that's our work and recommendation, and a good bit of it is the people running the facility.
It's obvious if you live here. You don't, like, in my house, they pick up garbage up on Tuesdays. And I can never remember a Tuesday because holidays don't fall on Tuesdays, I fall Monday. So they got to double up. But in my house, they pick it up after, never. They also pick up recycling, which we've gotten into. And it's probably one of the biggest savers of our landfill of anything. And they never fail to pick it up as well. But I could, just going through my notes, and the most important thing that I've got to say is that we are at the end of our land. And we're fixing to have to build a new one. And it could be anywhere from two, three million dollars. And to me, looking at your record for the last 12 years and how you charge and how much you have charged us when you could have probably, it would be the most goodest thing we ever did to try to replace you guys or somebody else to build a landfill that's going to cost us, unless it's going to cost us, and we can't do without it. Because if we don't do it, we got a contract with somebody else to pick up garbage up. If we do, we're ruined, we take the price of everything. But I want to say that because I know that you do a great job for us. And not everybody does, as we're going to probably talk about next Monday night, because we didn't have enough to talk about. But I appreciate it, honestly, for the city in Scottsboro.
Yes, thanks. I'd like to reiterate that as well. I know I've spoken to some of your clients in the past, and working relationship that you have with Scottsboro, and the money that you save us, and also keep them out of trouble with A D M. And I think the relationship that y'all have with them, and knowing exactly what they need, and also with the leadership that we have with Eddie Glitter, you know, working with him and the relationship that you have. That's what you have to have. I have other friends that are on boards in other cities, and y'all represent them, and they speak very highly of you too, in your company. So I think Keith, Keith asks the majority of my questions. You know, some of the tangibles with you doing, helping us with the grant, the walking trail, you know, that's something that y'all did both beyond, and people are taking advantage of that for us. I'd like to ask Eddie, if you will, to come up, thank him.
Thank you. Thank you, y'all.
Eddie, can you kind of give us some insight of your working relationship with the CDG? Your history?
Of course, we've researched it quite well before we brought the CDG or asked council to bring the CDG on board. Since then, we've got a great relationship with them, due to the fact, and as Daniel brought it to you, and you did too. They don't charge us for a lot of things. And believe me, I can stay on the phone with somebody for an hour, couldn't burn their time up, and we never get charged for a phone call. We've never been charged for anything other than a project that we request and that we bring it to the council. When it's approved, then that's when CDG does charge us, but the charges are upfront. And not everybody knows what they are. They have helped us bring our landfill up to something that's presentable, which is very special to me. Back in 1970, when the landfill was moved from the city dump to airport, it was moved to Marktown, where it is now, next door. I was the next nearest neighbor there. So I grew up in a dump. I was 13-year-old, tried going to school in Scottsboro and getting a date where you live. Hey, that's a true story there. And it stayed that way for a long, long, long time. And it was, as Keith has said, it was the worst landfill in the state. No secrets about it anywhere. And it was. The nice of what the community, my parents passed away, they still live there. They bought a house, built a house, and that's where they were born and raised, and that's where they live. Since then, since we brought CDG onboard, we've been able to do a lot of things different. We have been able to purchase quite a bit of property at the base of Tuit, which, if we hadn't of the landfill with the closing down for a second, we've got enough land that we purchased last city for another 80, probably 80 years. And we certainly do have a relationship with the community that we can buy more now if we need it. So that's been great for us. It's been great for the city, otherwise you're going to be out of the landfill business, and you're only other option is the next year's landfill is 34 miles away, which is that culminating. And when you're trucking, is the amount of waste that we are, especially from the industries and a runoff business, that is going to cost your plants probably three times as much a month as it does now. And some of the plants are in the $20,000, $25,000 a month range for waste removal and disposal, and that's what we do. You add that type of expense to our plants, and you're really harming their bottom line. So we have with our relationship with CDG, been able to look more favorable, certainly by A D M, and certainly by the community, and that's very important to me, is how we look in the community. Like Keith says, his garbage league, and probably 100% of people, they don't ever think about it anymore. That's just the beginning for us. With Daniel and Sarah, our other engineer that works with Daniel over our landfill, and the whole CDG crew, they're local people. They have an office in Albertville, and a lot of times they will send some of their engineers from Albertville to our landfill to help us, maybe go in some graves, spotting some corners and things like this. And them being that local, it certainly lessens our expenses. And we are a small landfill. We're the smallest N S W landfill in the state. The next ones are, we're a 350-ton range is what our permit calls for, most of them are $600,000 to $1,500,000. We are a small landfill. Our profit margin, it has to be run extremely tight due to our income and our expenses. And CDG certainly helps us because they do manage or are the engineers to a lot of other of the larger landfills throughout the state. And we can certainly pull from their knowledge. And of course, being involved in Solid Waste Association, I know these landfill operators too, so we interact, and we talk on the phone a lot to each other about situations, how are you doing this, and how are you doing that, you know? Our relationship with the CDG has certainly been very, very lucrative and profitable for the city, and no more than their charges are for us. And you won't find any better anywhere in the state. We are the best because we surround ourselves with the best. And that's just the simplest.
I appreciate it. I appreciate the job that you've done for us. And did anyone ever call and ask you about this project coming up for renewal or anything?
The permit renewal, it's one of those things that we looked at when we brought CDG onboard and also with Highland Technical. There are areas of expertise that is required, the permit, the water testing, things like that are required, and, you know, they're very specific. We sit down and we charge CDG with making sure that all of our permits, we have four different permits, and they renew at different increments, that they handle this. Don't bother me with it unless there's a question. You handle it because I walk by the permits every day, either at my office or the landfill. And I couldn't tell you when one's due or not, unless I look at it, and I won't forget it, but there it is anyway. Over the years, they renew our permits because that's the order I gave, and I have the authority to give them that order. It's in our budget, the money is, and that's what I do, is manage the department and manage the landfill, and that's part of it. Every one time that one comes up for renewal, we will get called from CDG, as we did, as I did this year. It was discussed with them in April, first April, in Gulf Shores Solid Waste Meeting, and they said they were working on it. I said, fine, make sure that I get a permit in the mail before ours expires, because if your permit expires, your landfill closes, wrapped thing. They renewed every time, there's never been a glitch. Same way with Highland Technical, that we use for our stormwater and our groundwater monitoring. They have the same charge for me, handle it. They handle not only the testing, but the reporting that has to be submitted. And I don't call them, no more than I do CDG, and say, our permits up for renewal. I don't call them and say, it's time for your semi-annual water monitoring, because that's their job. They do it, they send an invoice, we pay it out of our budget, if we're budgeting. CDG's same way with any permit, and we've never had any glitch, as I said, in our permitting, because it's always done, it's always on time, as I charged them. So charged them this year with two more areas that we need to do at the landfill this year. And I've already talked with them, and I've already charged, I've already met with the engineers months and months ago, they're engineers from Albertville at the landfill. So we're working on several things. And I've already gave the order to do it.
Are we not required to have a 10-year plan?
We're required to have a waste removal, a solid waste management plan, this 10-year. And it's also something we've been working on for over a year with Highland Technical. This will be the second trip we've done with them on our solid waste management plan. We're required by law to have that if you remove. If you're a solid waste hauler remover, you're required to have a 10-year plan submitted and approved. Right now, it's at A D M for their approval. It will then come back to Scottsboro, where there'll be a public hearing, and the public is allowed to input, and it will be in these chambers as it was 10 years ago. And then it'll be signed off on or sent back for modifications. But it is due here pretty soon. But that's why we have to have our people working years ahead on a lot of things to keep us in compliance. You can't just, oh, let's do this today. You're way behind. You're done off your permit, you're done off, you don't count on your ability to operate effectively.
I appreciate the pride that you take.
I work with a lot of good people.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Daniel, I have one other question for you, sir. Has there been any compliance issues, you guys, over the past year?
No.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Daniel?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
When we, you and Sarah came up and met with Josh and I in April, and, you know, we just sort of did an overview of the landfill, and I appreciate y'all coming, and I understand the work you've done, and I don't think anybody's ever questioned the quality of work. But it was never mentioned to Josh and I about the upcoming renewal permit, or that you were working on it, or anything like that, was it during that meeting?
I believe we discussed the renewal, the other activities that Eddie's talking about, the ongoing projects that are, as I mentioned, you a couple of years.
We didn't talk about the process for this summer for that, I don't believe.
We didn't talk in any detail.
No.
And I believe at that meeting, the essence we got was that we kind of continued business as usual.
Sure, sure. And then, I guess, to, part of the confusion here, I guess, or miscommunication here, when I did send out the request for proposal for the renewal application, nobody called, y'all got the letter, and Sarah, I think, called me a few days before and said, can I email our proposal? And I said, sure. But when y'all received that letter, nobody said, hey, we've been in communication with Eddie, we know this is due, we're already working on this. There was none of that communication.
No, sir. We did not.
And my apologies if that's an error on my part, but... Eddie, we know this is due, we're already working on this. There was none of that communication.
No, sir. We did, we did not.
And, and my apologies if that's an error on my part, but I would have expected something as well.
Thank you.
May I, may I ask one more question?
Yes.
Tom?
Not necessarily.
Okay. My, my understanding is that we city, you know, when I say that, it's basically you the mayor, uh, has all, has sent two people to the landfill already to begin work on this kind of stuff. Uh, is that correct?
They, we had two different engineering companies that submitted proposals and they wanted to look at the landfill.
Is sure.
Yes, sir. Nobody filled us for anything, sir.
Thank you.
We'll go to reports. Mayor?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
I don't have anything to say. Thank you all for coming.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I, I have something. Uh, we, we talked about this landfill and we listened to how for all these years it's been successful, went from nothing to the best in the state. We have the best people as our engineers, we have the best people running it, we have the best employees. So what I would like to ask is that the director of our landfill, Eddie Blizzard, uh, be returned to work by the mayor and his doctor. And many don't know that after visits and things happened here, he went to the, the conference. While there, got sick, uh, could hardly make it home, but when did, uh, the doctor put him in the hospital and, and put him on sick leave from the city of Scottsboro because he had heart issues. At this point, Eddie is better, but he, his doctor will not release him to come back to work until he is assured, the doctor has assured, that he will not be, uh, coming back to work under hostile working conditions. And so I'm, I'm just asking the mayor if he would to bring Eddie back and to assure him, his doctor and, and anyone else. And it's actually not very funny, but it, asking that he would not be subjected to hostile work conditions because, you know, all the things that happen and would you do that?
I'm not going to comment on personnel matters, but I think his, or any employees, sick time is between them and the H R department and their position. That's all I can say.
Well, then I, I'd like to go ahead and finish what I was going to say then. Uh, several weeks ago, we were at a council meeting just like this. And during the afternoon, it came to my attention that a contract was, uh, was coming up and that it had been changed. So when I walked in city council meeting, Eddie was sitting over there and, and I, I asked him, I said, Eddie, do you know anything about this contract? And he said, I understand there's a contract fixing to be let or acting out of it. And then with the extent of that conversation. So when we go into the, the council meeting, uh, and we get down to the end as we are now, I asked you a simple question. I said, Mr. Mayor, can you tell us about that, uh, the contract in regard to our contract mowing burden and our, will we mow part of a contract part? Uh, and, and he said, we're letting him be, I believe he said, we're letting him bid next Friday. Uh, the same contract we do every year, I asked you. And you asked me what, what I mean, what I mean by that. And I said, well, I understood that you may have changed some of the things, taken away some, added some, and I wanted to know in regard to if we're going to talk about it. And you told me, well, we just had to wait and see what the bid says. So, so I let that, I let it go at that time. Uh, the council meeting continued for a few more minutes and then Eddie, Eddie Blizzard was sitting back there and he shaking hands with people as he always does. I, up here shaking hands with people as I, trying to do it. And you went out to the back. He left, you left, and then eventually I left. And as I went outside, uh, I saw, I guess you would call it a skirmish across the street. And as it turns out that you were upset because you thought that Mr. Blizzard had told me about this so-called this contract. But Mr. Blizzard didn't have a thing in the world to do with this contract, somebody else did. And it's not a big deal anyway because it's about city funding stuff that we do as a councilman and we have a right to know. You should have told us to start with and wouldn't have any of this issue going on right now, but we did. So you got in the vehicle, you sped around the building and you went across the street. Some say you jumped the curb, some say you didn't, you said you didn't. And, and you cursed Mr. Blizzard three times. And, and he did nothing. He did not one thing and, and escalated and it got kind of rough, then he calmed down. I even walked over because nobody else was over there and, and he calmed down. And shortly thereafter is when he got sick and shortly thereafter is when he went on sick leave. But before that, you called him in, you had the police chief in your office, you had the H R director in your office and you called Mr. Blizzard in and you reprimanded him for conduct, unbecoming of department head or something to that degree. It was a verbal, uh, warning, yet it was written. And I understand that's the way you're supposed to do it. But I, I guess the bottom line is the man did nothing. You attacked him and, and now he's wanting to have difficulties in life. And I don't know why, I personally don't know why you can't bring him back to work. And they didn't do the job he paid to do, he knows to do better than anybody in this world and all the people you send up there don't know how to do it. So, and I'm excited to answer any questions you might have, I mean.
Yeah, I see. Well, I'm about nine, I've got about three more months. But I, I, I don't want to see the city go down the tubes. I don't want to see us, we, in very short time, early next year, we might have to build a brand new cell there and it's going to cost two, three million dollars that. And we can't afford to just hire Dick, Tom and Harry to come in here and, and do this work when we've got people that know how to do it. And a perfect example of something we didn't talk about tonight, and that's the solid issue that we'll talk about next week. And, uh, we don't need that. We need a landfill, we need a good landfill. We've always had one and we don't need this group of people sitting here all over screwing it up. That's all for now.
Thank you. All I have is that there will be a solid waste disposal authority meeting on July the second, immediately following our city council work session, our city, yeah, city council work session. But, uh, appreciate everybody coming out tonight and, uh, that I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
About a second.
Second.
I'll bear to say hi.